We are going to go into our next item, Boundary Study Program and Program Analysis Update. May I have the presenters come to the front table? And make sure you introduce yourself. This is a topic of great interest to the board and to the community. We are building in incremental updates so that we can keep everyone informed. Welcome to the meeting.
Ms. Yang, just procedural point of order. If we could request the board make a motion to revise the agenda to reflect the reordering of the items.
Move to revise the agenda to reflect the reordering of the items.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, everyone. That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Yang. And I will say that this is likely to be a very hot topic and regular fixture at meetings to come and even beginning with today. We heard testimony from the community about the boundary study. We will continue to hear more testimony from the community about the boundary study and the associated projects, in particular, the program analysis. Today, you will hear an update on the current boundary study progress. And we have entered into a contractual agreement on February 6, 2025, with Flow Analytics to conduct and facilitate our boundary study for the reopening of Charles W. Woodward High School, the new Crown High School, and the expansion of Damascus High School in the fall of 2027. The scope of services in the contractual agreement with Flow Analytics includes project consultation and data validation, development of the community engagement process, impartial analysis of the boundary study options, facilitation of the community engagement, coordination of my recommendations, and the Board of Education's study process. Today, we will focus on our initial onboarding and project planning with Flow Analytics and the initial community engagement process aligned to the board's policies, including Policy FFA, the Educational Facilities Planning, and ABA, the Community Engagement Policy. The team will return for another update on April 10, 2025, during the Board Business Meeting to provide an update on the process and to present a draft community engagement plan. We will also talk very briefly about the program analysis plan as well. I will now ask Mr. Adnan Mamun, our Deputy Chief of Facilities Management, and our Associate Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Nikki Hazel, to present.
Good afternoon. So can we get the slide deck up, please? Thank you. Yeah, so good afternoon. We are here to provide an update, as Dr. Taylor already said, to talk about what we have done so far and what is currently happening. There's a lot to update on that front and as well as give you an update and preview of what's to come over the next few months. So before we start our discussion today, would like to take a moment to acknowledge some of the feedbacks as we have started engaging with our community partners and to, in our effort to have a culturally responsive community engagement. There's an overarching theme that we have heard from the community members about their experiences that they have had in the past boundary studies. So we're, you know, we are utilizing that feedback as we move forward with our study. Many of the community members have shared their frustrations about a lack of communication and the trust in the process. So we're, this is why we're going to be, you know, using this opportunity to try to do this in a much more comprehensive way. We're committing to ensuring these studies are conducted in alignment with our Board Policy, FAA, as well as the Board Policy, ABA, which is our community engagement guidelines. So what has happened so far? We have contracted with Flow Analytics. We have had multiple meetings with them to start talking about our data for, that is going to be analyzed for the boundary study. We have also put together a cross-functional project team from across MCPS, different divisions, including facilities, transportation, food and nutrition, academics. And we're meeting with Flow on a regular basis to start discussing about the, all the data. And then we have also put together a community advisory group that is from the different organizations within the community. And we're, you know, engaging them to prepare the community engagement plan that we will bring to the board on April the 10. And then in the next few months, we're going to start going out to the community and start informing. The first set of meetings is going to start happening in April. We'll talk a little bit more about that as we go further down the presentation. And then in May, we're going to start presenting the boundary options to the community. Next slide, please. So there are, you know, in parallel to the boundary study, there's, Ms. Hazel is going to talk a little bit about the, the analysis of the, the program, programs that we have in our secondary schools. We have kind of divided the, the efforts into several phases. So we've already finished the first phase, which was to, for the boundary study, which was to, you know, finalize our contract. We're currently in the data collection phase as well as initial community engagement meetings. And then between May and July, we're going to have developed boundary scenarios and present the options to the community and provide the community opportunities to provide us feedback about, about these options. And then over the summer, those are going to be, the feedback is going to be analyzed. And, and in, back in August and September, when the schools open back up, we will go back to the community for any updated options to, and provide, you know, opportunity for the community to provide more feedback. And then October through February is going to be when the, you know, final analysis is going to happen. And we're going to sit down with Dr. Taylor in, in creating the superintendent's recommendation. And that's going to be taken to the board in February, and the vote is due in March. This is for the boundary study. I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Hazel to talk about the program analysis.
Thank you. So as was stated, we are doing a program analysis, all of our academic programs across the district. And our goal ultimately is to ensure that we have equitable programming for all of our students across the district. And so this program analysis includes all of our programs. And so it's all schools. So it goes actually beyond our boundary schools that we're focusing on. Our first phase was to collect data to ensure that we were very clear about all of the programs, who's in the programs, where they're located, demographics, and the implications on operations as well. So that piece is finished. And we are putting that together and packaging it for you all and for the community to better understand where we are. And now we are in the second phase as we are working to ensure that we have an advisory group. Our goal is to have some of the members from the boundary advisory group join our group so that there is some consistency and understanding the process and what is taking place. But we want to make sure that we have a nice group of members on our committee from all parts of the community in our district, our students, and our staff, who can really give us some good input on our programs. And we will develop a framework for our programs, hopefully by the end of next month. It's a tight timeline, but that is our goal to be able to develop a framework so that we're very clear about what we want for all of our students in the district as it relates to equitable programming. And then as we move into our later phases, we want to work alongside of Flow Analytics and our, our facilities team to ensure that when they are presenting boundary options, that there are also programming options that go along with it. And then ultimately, as you can see there, as we begin an implementation phase, we will ultimately get to our elementary schools as well. But it is very important for us to have a clear understanding of what our high school programming will look like, where programs will be located in the district over time, and then be able to kind of have that vertical articulation for our elementary as we move forward. So that is the high-level plan.
If you could go to the next slide. So our Policy FAA, our Educational Facilities Planning, and Board Regulation FAA RA, which is the Educational Facilities Planning, also relates to education facilities planning, identify four main factors when we are creating a recommendation for the board to consider any boundary studies. These factors include demographic characteristics of student population, geography, stability of school assignments over time, meaning making sure that, you know, students are not getting moved multiple times during their, you know, experience in one school. And then obviously, one of the other factors is facility utilization. The, this policy guides the educational facility planning process and leads to the equitable and fiscally responsible and educationist sound decisions while promoting public understanding for these processes. When developing recommendations for the board, the superintendent of the school will provide a rationale for each recommendation that demonstrates the extent to which any recommendation advances any of these factors listed here. While each of the factors will be considered, it may not be feasible for an individual option to be able to adequately address all the factors listed here. So that would be, you know, the decision point for the board at that time. Go to the next slide, please. So these are some of the initial engagement that we have already started talking about. We put together the MCPS project team. That's a cross-functional team that has all the members from transportation, food and nutrition, academics, and logistics, as well as facilities. And these are the team members that are, you know, already started, you know, having discussions with Flow about the existing data. Then we also have the community project team, which includes the team members from the different community organizations that are coming along with us. They're going to be helping us shape the community engagement plan that we plan to bring back to the board on April the 10. They're going to be, help us, you know, provide the feedback from the, and the diverse voices that we would like to hear as we move forward through this boundary study process. And then we also will be working with the Board Education Advisory Committee when that, when that committee is formed. And when they start having their meetings, we will make sure to engage with them and keeping them informed, as well as having them review the community engagement plan and getting their feedback. And obviously, the largest component is this, the community at large. As we start engaging the community, we're going to make sure that we're taking every opportunity to, to reach out to as many community members as we can. And in that regard, we have already started getting some really good feedback from our community project team as to how we should, you know, think about and be thoughtful and be deliberate in our approach to the, reaching out to the community instead of just targeting, say, the, the high school auditoriums. You know, some of the feedback that we have received is to also, you know, have these meetings in the middle schools and the elementary schools because by the time this boundary study actually goes into implementation, these are the students and the families that are going to be coming into those high schools. Next slide, please. So as far as the community engagement, our commitments is, is, is to adhere to the Board Policy, ABA, and, and to develop and promotion of inclusivity, cultural responsiveness, and anti-racist engagement. And these are the things that we're going to put together and present to the board on April the 10. And then, you know, our, you know, commitment is to engage the, you know, stakeholders who reflect the community's diversity and experiences. And to that regard, we have reached out and, and in that, in our community project team. We do have a diverse group of community members. And we're still, you know, working with other groups. And, and we also are, you know, going to be working with Mr. Savarna to engage some of the student members that, you know, we could get the student voices as we move forward with the, with the study. We also are planning to meet with the Faith Council end of this month to talk to them about, you know, providing some additional members, so from different portions of our community to help us, you know, give feedback throughout this process. So as I started talking about our community engagement, the first set of engagement is going to start first week of April. We're going to have two sets of meeting for each one of the two boundary studies. There's going to be two meetings for the Woodward Boundary Study. And there's going to be two meetings for the Crown and Damascus High School Expansion Project, community engagement. And one of these meetings are going to be virtual. So the first meeting on April 2 will be virtual for Woodward. It would be, you know, hosted in Zoom. And we will make sure all the closed captioning is available for anybody who participates. We do plan to record these meetings so that it is available for any community members that, you know, are unable to participate. On the second, they will have an opportunity to go back and review these meetings. And then we're going to have an in-person meeting for Woodward on the 8. And then for the Crown, we're, you know, having a meeting on the 7 in virtually, as well as an in-person meeting in Gethersburg High School on the night. So the first set of meetings, a lot of folks have already started asking what the purpose of these meetings are and are we presenting any options at these meetings? And the answer to that is no. We have not started, you know, developing any options for the study yet. The purpose of the first four meetings is just to bring the community along and, and getting them oriented to the boundary study, just talking to them about the process, talking to them about how they are able to give us feedback as the study progresses and, and the survey, you know, the links to the surveys, as well as we will also provide them with the calendar dates for the future meetings so they know when, you know, when they can expect us back in their communities to start actually talking about options. So the first set of meetings are going to be just to orient the communities so that they know what's happening and what they can expect throughout the process. In round two, we will go back in May, late May and early June. And this is when we do plan to start presenting the initial options to the community. What it will do is allow them to look at the, look at the options, the initial thoughts, and, and, you know, how it affects each one of the four factors. And then, you know, they will have the entire summer to be able to give us feedback on those options, which we can collect over the summer for future phases of this project. Sorry, there, first slide. Okay. So yes, the engagement timeline. So April is going to be the initial sessions, as I discussed, both virtual and in-person. And in May and June, we're going to have community meeting sessions, which will, you know, we will present the initial options at that time. And then we will also give them the, the survey that will allow them, the community to provide feedback. And then between July and August, we're going to collect all the surveys and look at all the feedback that we are getting from the, the community and use that feedback to refine those options and go back to the community in September for a second round of discussion and presenting, presentation of options to the community. And then October, November timeframe, we will be collecting more feedback from the community in order for us to present the superintendent's recommendation in December of 2025. I think that is it. Yep. So, so essentially, there was an update on what, you know, what has been happening with the boundary study, what has happened, what we are doing currently, and what we planned to do in the next few months. As I, you know, Dr. Taylor has already mentioned that we will be back on April 10 with our community engagement plan for a discussion with the board at that time. And now we will open it up for board member questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Now, I know the boundary study are not just about adjusting the school zones. It's also about our planning for the future. And that's why we have both the boundary study and the program analysis happen at the same time now. So I'm going to open up for my colleagues for questions and comments. I'm going to start from my right-hand side, and then I'll go online. So Ms. Stewart. One question and one comment first.
Well, first of all, thank you. I'm so happy that we're getting started. And the message has gone out to the community that these meetings are coming up. I did get some feedback that the first meeting is at Walter Johnson, the DCC, which is five high schools, huge community. They're feeling nervous about this whole process just because the discussion of Woodward really started, to tell you truth, in the WJ cluster. And so to get buy-in from the community, knowing that we have Einstein, which is hugely overcrowded, and Blair, which is the biggest school, I think, in Maryland. So, and crowded, and also Wheaton, which is personate, it seems. They want to know that they will have input that will be seriously listened to. And so I know the meetings have been scheduled, but whatever we can do to get the DCC to show up, if that means possibly after the first meeting, if you see a low attendance rate, to schedule something to kick this off in the Down County, it would go far so we have a level playing field from the very beginning. And some of this is perception, but that is, it is, it is a perception. So thank you.
Ms. Wolf.
Thank you for the work you've done so far. My, my big concern, of course, is program evaluation because, as you know, East County is not in the boundary study, at least the Northeast Consortium is not. So, you know, we heard Bridget Howe ask several very good questions about the program evaluation. And when I started thinking about, I think I know the answer, maybe I don't. I think it would be a good idea, and you could tell me how much, I don't know how much work would be involved in this, to put up a Q and A about it on our website or whatever website that, that you think it appropriate to go on. But I think it would help people understand. And the Q and A needs to include, why now? Why, or why now when you're doing a boundary study? They don't seem to be related. So how is this going to be integrated into that? Now, I know that you said one question, but these questions won't make any sense if I have to wait to go all the way around. So I'm just going to go on with my other one. I, I don't, I think that you're doing a lot of community outreach for the boundary study. I'm wondering, don't we need community outreach so people understand program evaluation? So that they understand how this is going to impact them, even though they're not a part of the boundary study? And they get buy-in and feel like they're a part of whatever is being decided? Because right now, there's no feeling that anybody cares about what's going on over there. It's sort of like starting to feel like an island unto itself. And so I think it would be really important, while you're having these initial community meetings, that you have a few initial community meetings over in the East County so that we don't feel left out of everything. Plus, I think program evaluation could have an impact on a lot of things if you do this right. And the fact that East County is left out kind of raises the question, and I'm going to keep saying that, by the way, so you could get used to, kind of raises the question of, of the case program over at Sherwood. By Sherwood not being a part of the Northeast Consortium, I think it misses out on students who might think about going there because there's no bus transportation over to Sherwood from where we are. So that's just something that I wanted you to think about because we're really starting to feel like an island unto ourselves. And I don't really like that feeling.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Okay, so I'm going to go to Ms. Rivera.
Thank you. Did you want to answer or? No, okay. Yes, you did?
Can you turn on your mic, please? Yeah.
So I was going to respond to that, but I didn't know whether we are waiting to, for everybody to make their comments or should we respond?
Mr. Mamun, I appreciate that. If you would like to answer a board member's comment, turn on your light, and then we will have your answer to question. Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry. So going back to your comment about the, the engagement. So that is an excellent point, something that we also talked about as far as, you know, how do we reach out to, to the, you know, broader community? The idea behind the first two meetings were that, yes, these are extremely important meetings. These are, again, mostly talking about the process, but not necessarily actually talking about any of the, of the boundary options. And so these are very important meetings. So we try to do those in, in locations where, you know, their public transportations are available, which is why we, you know, picked, picked the high schools that we did, as well as, you know, Gethersburg High School being one of them for the first round for, for Crown, allows us to, you know, allow most, you know, more people to join. And then we're going to obviously have those meetings recorded as well, the online versions of it, so people are able to, able to, you know, view them. And as we move forward with the, with the future phases of the boundary study, we're going to be scheduling these at different high schools for, 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 you know, for different rounds. And again, you know, as we see the attendance, we do have, you know, flexibility built into our contract to add more meetings. So the comment that you made about, you know, if we are not seeing proper, you know, amount of participation, then we will obviously will have the ability to add more meetings and, and, you know, in, in certain locations to make sure that we're reaching as many of the community members as we can.
Just as a quick follow-up, being that you're not, that this is it for the rollout, we want to make sure that at least it is going out to, directly to parents through communication systems, through the remind, through email in different languages. So we, they, we don't, we won't get the message back like, oh, we didn't know this was happening. So the full-on push to let people know that it will have, there will be a virtual option and accessible in-person option, but sooner than later so that the messaging really gets out to just about everyone. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera.
Yes, um, thank you so much for the presentation. I'm just trying to, when you say, you know, there's already the community meetings, I thought you meant Woodward and Crown in April, but it sounds like there's other meetings going on. I'm just wondering if we can make sure that we have that on the website, all the meetings that, in a calendar and schedule, all the meetings that are happening? If there's a meeting coming up? If we can highlight it that for that week so people know? And on Mrs. Wolf's point about the Q and A, I think it's a great idea. I think we even should be explaining what a program evaluation is, what goes into a program evaluation? What are the ingredients of a program evaluation, right? Not just assume that our community members already have, right? That they're all like great evaluators. But just, you know, to give, to give our community the tools in order to be able to be engaged in this and to keep in mind that we have a lot of first generation. We are a very, you know, multicultural, diverse community that we have a lot of people that have not been engaged because sometimes they don't have the tools. So they feel out of place. So I would like us to, to figure out how we can do like a toolkit on how to go through a boundary, and you can share it with me, too, boundary evaluation. And when you have all these committees, right? This advisory committee is a project team, the MCPG project team, the community at large. I know what, there's going to be communication, but I think it's important of when the communication is being taken. Because if we want some of these committees, or like the Board, the Education Advisory Committee, to really be able to make an impact, because these are people are taking time off of their time to be able to come, you know, and give of their, of their time, that we actually, you know, things have now already happened where they're not going to be able to have a say or be able to have an input. So I'm hoping that there's going to be a way of communication that is going to be just very clear and coherent to be able, you know, and synchronized, right? So I'm hoping that everybody's calendars and times are, you know, you're all going to share all that good stuff and then be able then to have cohesiveness into the process. Thank you.
Ms. Silvestri.
Yes, I'm very much looking forward to the larger, comprehensive community engagement plan that you will present to us April 10, I think you said. And these two kickoff meetings, we got to get them right because it sets the tone for the whole process going forward. So no pressure, but, you know, just wanted to emphasize that point. And just a point of clarification, the program evaluation, Ms. Hazel, you, I heard you say it will include elementary school programs. Could you clarify that?
We will begin with analyzing high school and middle school first. And as we make recommendations for how we ensure that we've looked at all the programs and recommendations for where we may replicate programs across the district for equitable access and things of that nature, then the next phase will be elementary. Because we want to make sure high school, high school and middle school programs are set, and those elementary programs align to what the middle and high school programs are. So, we want to get that down first, and then the next phase will be elementary.
I just want to add one sentence to that. Thank you, Madam President and Ms. Silvestri. A good way to think about this, and, and also why it's good to, to look at the secondary just in general, when you're doing any kind of boundary adjustment or any kind of program adjustment, is you, you really need to conceptualize this of where you want the students to end. And then backward map how to get there in the, the most effective and efficient way that you can. So, it is smart for us, perfect world, we do all of this all at one time, but even if we were to do all of this at one time, as impractical as that would be, we would still scope and sequence it in this order, because we would want to start with what the aspiration is for an endpoint. What would, what are, what are we expecting of a graduate to attain? And then, what programmatic decisions need to inform how we get to that point? So, what Ms. Hazel is talking about is, as we're ramping up, it's really about as we're mapping backwards.
Thank you.
Ms. Zimmerman?
Thank you. I also, you know, I appreciate all the work that has been done in this update. I appreciate that, also that a lot of this work is being done in-house in MCPS. Thank you for that. I also have a question about our program study. And it, it sounds like, it sounds like there's some confusion about what, what are kind of our expected outcomes of this? Like, can the community expect that they're going to see more programs open? Are they expecting to see programs closed? Are they expecting to see programs move? I think clarifying that would help kind of ease a lot of, a lot of the questions.
And that is perfect for what we are doing in, in Phase Two. We are taking a look at the data. We have, in some areas, very low enrollment and low interest, but we have programs running. We have, in some areas, high interest, long waiting lists, one program. And so, we are in a place where we need to make decisions about how do we ensure that those programs that have high interest and there's high industry demand are placed equitably in our district? It may be we replicate programs, maybe we sunset a program. We need a, a long-term and a short-term plan for how we roll that out. So, that will be Phase Two with our stakeholder group, to really make some decisions about, again, what do we want for our students? What's mandatory from the state? And where are we, where do we want to be five, 10 years from now with, with our programming? And, and looking at it across the district, making sure that all of our areas, East County everywhere, that there are, are programs for our students to be able to access. So, Phase Two is really outlining that. And then the third phase would be, how do we implement it? So, what does the actual fa, a phase-in plan look like? So, that's what we will be doing. And we'll continue to update the community. We do plan to do a survey. And I think the website, the Q and A, all of that is a really great idea to keep the community updated.
Okay, so it sounds like the, the community can expect that there will be change, but it's going to be based on where we see our student interest and our growth. Great. Speaking of that notification, I know environmentally, we try to focus on reducing the amount of paper that we use, but I also can speak that there are many families that check folders. And, you know, that's part of the routine. It might be something that we consider in notification across, that that's, that's something that is easily accessed by everyone, and that's something that we could consider doing.
Thank you. Mr. Savanna?
Yes, thank you. I, I want to say I appreciate the, the dedication to really receiving student input across all aspects, you know, from the board side to the MCPS side of both of the sort of community engagement partners. Really, having that focus on student input is, is important to me. Moreover, even the potential of going into schools during the day and sort of starting to speak to students during that, you know, we don't have to take an entire community engagement session just to listen to the students. And, you know, it really frees up some more time for, for us to listen to, to all sides of our constituents, right? From our students during, like, potential at, like, lunch, or even during, for our community members after school during some of those engagement sessions. I want to say, in regards to the program evaluation, like true and comprehensive program evaluation really does mean across the county, right? As someone who, you know, who is bussed over an hour, right, to, to get to a program, right? And it, and it is a very difficult thing to, to take up. And, and it was one of the reasons why I left my program, right? Because it would have meant an hour to, to be bussed across. But also understanding that if we're looking at program evaluation, a, a big part of that means that programs can be located excessively, but they also must be implemented with fidelity to ensure effectiveness. So, whenever we're looking at whatever the program evaluation may be, how are we ensuring the effectiveness of these programs to the state that they, that they are currently being seen at? Or how are we improving them beyond what we're seeing them in? It's not enough to just put a program somewhere and say, well, we gave you accessibility, if we're not going to give the resources to support it. And I believe in MCPS to give the resources to these programs to really help them and make them thrive. And then my final thing is really about the access to information. So, like, I think the, that an update on dedicated, like, can, can we get an update on the dedicated redistricting page that we were, you know, talking about a while ago? And then, also, any materials that we're talking about with, with regards to redistricting and the program evaluation should really be easily accessible. And every single piece of material that we're putting out to the community should be available in one space, one, one page on the website. And I would really even go as far to say as including a tab at the top of our website for this, because it's such a big part of what our community is going to see over the next couple of years, that I, I think it's that important, that we would really do that much. I understand that's not possible, but I do believe that we need to make the communication as accessible as possible. And access to information should not be a barrier to entry. Thank you.
I'm going to go check online to see if Ms. Motoya has any comments or questions. Go ahead, Ms. Motoya.
Thank you so much, and I apologize for having to step out and take the remainder of the meeting from home. I just wanted to say thank you to both of you and all of your staff and all of the other MCPS staff. I know that these are two very large lifts, and it takes a lot to organize, and it takes a lot to gather all of this information and put it into a coherent approach. So, I appreciate that. I appreciate these slides. They're very clear. It gives me a snapshot of all of the important information. I'm going to carry this around in my bag, so that when people ask me, I can provide them with these times and date and timelines. So, I just wanted to say thank you, both of you, for providing some clear slides for us today. Thank you.
I have a few, I have a comment. So, tack along with Ms. Motoya's comment. So, we need to cut through the noise. So, having a clear chart is very helpful of the timeline. And I also say, throughout our community engagement, make it make sense. It's very overwhelming for our families. These are their children we are talking, where to attend school we are talking about. So, avoid the jargons. For example, when you talk about proximity, right? Actually, just be simple, say, hey, this might change this, this bus route. This might means this neighborhood might need to take the bus. Or this means this neighborhood can walk. Cut through some jargons when we do that. And also, end every meeting clearly with, oh, what's next? I think when we have a community gathering, and afterwards, people are in a waiting pattern. So, to be able to make a clear, say, our next engagement, or today, we are doing this, our next step will be this, and the timeline for that is probably during this time. That will be very helpful for our families. And one more thing is, set the expectation. What are the chances in a school system with 160,000 students, everyone is happy any single day, right? And the same with boundary studies, that this, these are difficult conversations that we know that the end result, not every family will be happy with the end result. However, in our effort, we need to be clear, we need to gather all the feedback and make clear rationale what the final recommendation is and why we are making those recommendations. So, in the whole process of boundary study, I think that setting expectations and making an effort to meet our expectation is, like, of clear communication, robust community engagement is important. My final question is, when you are going out to do, when you do the Zoom session, and that page, would that be posted? And, and how would that be communicated beyond our regular email to, to our communities?
Yeah, so we are working on different, many different ways of getting out, not just the email. We're, you know, also considering getting it out through our partners, the county offices, their outreach. We're also, you know, as, you know, one already was mentioned about, you know, maybe having a piece of paper with a QR code or a, or a link to the meeting that goes out to, to the, in the backpacks, to the, to the students. So, we're, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, the broadest way possible for us to, to be able to get that information out. And as far as Mr. Savanna's question about, there is a dedicated website, but I love your suggestion about, you know, making sure that is, there's a link to it on the, on our main page of when, you know, people are visiting our, our main website, that there's, you know, one of the things, like a banner, maybe, that says, you know, boundary study, and then, you know, if it, but we do have a page, so folks are able to get that, the information about the meetings, previous recordings. Any of the information will be available on our website.
So, I appreciate that. Using other organizations, trusted community organization, or community connectors, it has proven to be very effective in the past in the county, so I hope we, we can continue to do that, all right? Are there any other lights? Ms. Stewart?
So, not to throw a monk, a wrench in the, I'm going to say the wrong saying, so I'm just going to stay away from sayings. The transportation study, that was also supposed to be happening soon. There was a, community members and other people set up to talk about the transportation study. The reason I'm bringing that up is that when we do our program study, transportation has a lot to do with that. And so, I don't want to miss an opportunity to fix some of the complications that happened today with our programs and transportation. And also, knowing that there's other modes of, of transportation that can be used now, because some of that changed at the state level about what's allowed. And this could open up flexibility, and also looking forward, maybe even to work on healthier start times. So, will, what's happening with the transportation study along with the, this other huge study that's happening?
So, I can't speak to the study. However, we are working very closely with transportation with the program analysis and plan. So, they are working alongside us as we are mapping out any programs for the future. Transportation and facilities are working with us. They're, so they are very much included in that plan. I don't know about the study.
Yeah, for the boundary study as well. I mean, we do have, as we mentioned, our cross-functional team that is working with Flow very closely, includes, you know, our transportation team that, you know, because, you know, obviously, when we're talking about boundaries, one of the first things we start with is the walk zones, and then kind of work our way out. And transportation's been in, involved in those communications and those discussions as we start. So, they will be part of this entire study process as we, as we move forward.
Is the transportation study still happening? Or is that on hold? Or do we know?
I believe that we do have that in the works. And there is a component here, and if Kat Melchodi, if you want to come forward to talk a little bit about it, perfect world, all of these things dovetail into a new reality for MCPS that's a lot more efficient than the one that we're working with right now, and transportation's a big part of that. I know that we've, we've entertained some thoughts from a few constituents about elements of the, the transportation study that could even be potentially expanded to conceptualize some other frameworks with start times and a few other things, too. So, those are some things I know that we're, we're, we're looking at as well. But Kat, thank you for being here, and please share some thoughts.
Yes, absolutely. So, we have a steering committee that was formed after the consultant report was created and shared. And we are working through the part of the study that dealt with the routing solution. And so, we just completed an RFI for the routing solution. The members of our committee were invited in to give feedback on the RFI submissions. And all of that is being used to form the basis for an RFP for the transportation routing solution. And we're very excited about that, because it hasn't been updated since, I started in 1999, so I'm fairly certain before that, when the new Blair opened. And so, that is a huge part of this, because the efficiency that comes with using an updated system allows us to make better decisions and support programs in a better way, which is amazing for our students. So, I'm very excited about that work and the, sort of the, the connections that it brings to the boundary studies, as well as any kind of program analysis, because, like Nikki said, we all work very closely together, and we want students to be able to access, you know, programs and also, you know, not do it where they're sitting possibly in transportation for over an hour. So, yeah, we're very excited about it. There's a lot of overlap and connections, and more to come.
I have to say, I'm excited about this, too. It's almost like we're looking at this in a holistic way, which will only help us move forward in our goals. And also, because I know there's a lot of waiting lists, and if so, if we could have, that, we could alleviate our waiting list by having programs in different areas and then have kids be able to get there efficiently. So, anyway, thank you. Thank you for that.
Ms. Rivera-Orvin?
Thank you. Just very quickly, you have mentioned the, the Faith Council, and the Faith Council is under the Community Partnerships Group for the, for, for the county. So, I was just going to also highlight the fact that they have the other groups, where many folks are very, very involved, and they have a tap into a larger community that they represent. So, my hope would be that you will share that information, or even do a small little presentation to them to make sure, you know, that engagement happens. But as to Ms. Silvestri's point, no, right, no pressure, but you, you really, those two first meetings are very crucial to setting the tone.
I have a question. I hear the word "transportation study." Can someone remind me, didn't we just had a transport, transportation study a year or two years ago, that there is a result? And so, how is this, when we are talking about transportation study now, relate to that transportation study? Please illuminate.
They are one and the same. And so, we have the results from that study that was done, and we are using them in collaboration with the work that's being done for the boundary studies and the program analysis to make sure that all of the pieces are connected.
So, it's a continuation? That's an overview now? When we are looking at specific thing, then we'll continue to?
Absolutely. And as Mr. Mamoun said, we have a lot of members of our transportation groups, internal as well as external stakeholders from our community partners involved in this as well, which is really exciting.
And how long would this transportation study take? Is it the whole duration of boundary study? Or what are we looking at timeline-wise?
I think it'll be a part of the process for as long as this process takes and then beyond, because, you know, the program analysis will continue throughout. And so, it will, the, the initial phases will sort of dictate what comes next and, and how we can support, you know, sort of the next phases of program analysis.
So, it seems to me the scope of work is getting bigger and bigger, okay? Okay? So I would really appreciate some deliverable that you can share with the whole board, in terms of, I'm clear about the boundary study, what the outcome is. But what are the deliverables for the program evaluation and the transportation? And I know that improving the school system is an ongoing journey in all aspects, but in terms of what we are talking now, what deliverables are we talking about? I would like us to have a very clear idea. Thank you. Ms. Ms. Silvestri.
Maybe Dr. Taylor wants to clarify first.
So I, I'm, I'm going to make this even muddier, and say that there's a, a whole lot that will be influenced by the boundary study that will create other deliverables that, that we need to review, because this will influence our nutrition program and the size, space, and utilization of our cafeterias. This will impact our staffing plan dramatically, and shift human capital in a lot of different places throughout the district. So I think, I think you're right to ask about the multi-faceted deliverables that will be a part of this. We can absolutely see a concrete map on a piece of paper that shows where the general attendance zones are of a homeschool. Deliverable, check. We can see a program of study that articulates pathways at our secondary schools and eventually our elementary schools, that shows what course offerings are at what schools, and what the processes might be for elective programs or elective academic opportunities. Check. We might see bus configurations and transportation plans that align to a specific school, just like we would see a nutrition plan and a staffing plan that would align to a specific school, and what staffing exceptions might be created because there's a programmatic change at one place versus another place, and what schools are we anticipating growth versus we're anticipating retrenchment. So I think some of the deliverables, fortunately, are, are a part of things that we already create, and they are, they just need to be presented and articulated in the way that, that the team is, is making them as a part of this process. I think it is really important that the board pointed out that there is not a whole lot of enthusiasm behind the boundary study maybe right at this moment, because it doesn't feel like there's a lot of impact, and that there are geographic parts of the county that need to be brought into the conversation. But the reality is, is that the boundary study and its ripple effect will literally affect everyone in some way, shape, or form. And so being sensitive to that and making sure that the board sees deliverables and that we can tie those changes to the changes that are really happening as a part of these attendance boundary changes is really important for the community to see.
Yeah, both in a practical way of impacting everyday life in the school district, and also from the boards' point of view, for any project, the oversight. So without a clear understanding of our end deliverable and mind strong to hit that, we will appreciate having that to, to, to stay on top of all of this. Yes, Ms. Silvestri.
Just back to the transportation issue, just making sure I'm clear. There was a transportation study that has concluded, you used the consultant, the board got a report. What you're referring to as a transportation study, it's like analysis, right? It's like, as we're going through this boundary study process, there is a, a transportation analysis that has to happen for all of this to work. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that, that is correct, because any changes in the programs as well as boundaries can have impact, which is why we do have, I mean, transportation is one of the biggest partners in this, in this whole conversation, so they're, they're part of the core group.
Just wanted to clarify for our audience that the study is one thing, and this is an analysis, which is part of the boundary process. Thank you.
Seeing no other lights, I want to thank you for your work and your presentation. We anxiously wait for the April 10th update.